Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar.
That's correct. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus.
Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar.
That's right. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus.
Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar.
That's right. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus.
Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar.
That's right. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus.
Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar. That's right. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus. Good morning, State School. We would like to call for the May 7th, 2019, 9:00 AM, City Council meeting. We will have our invitation for the pleasure of Jesus, my Councilman Jeff Yar. That's right. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together. Lord, this morning I want to thank you for the investment that you made in us, the ultimate sacrifice. As we serve the city, whether in roles as elected officials or as city staff, community leaders, all of us working together, I pray, Father, that you give us the guidance necessary to be exemplary of that very investments you made in us, one that is selfless and one that seeks to commit to others first. And I just pray this morning that we will all receive the blessing that you bestowed upon us by just simply turning to you and acknowledging you as our Lord. And I pray all this this morning with the precious name of Jesus.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item 3B, recognition of the graduates of the State School Fire Department approved indoctrination program class of 2019. Chief Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Tim Graham is fire chief. Today, we'd like to recognize graduates from the State Fire Department's most recent eight-week recruit indoctrination program, commonly referred to as RIT training. I'd like to begin, before I call these guys up, by providing a few details regarding the program and why being successfully completing this training is such an accomplishment. The RIT program was implemented by the department several years ago and is an anywhere from six to eight-week program designed to provide the minimum training required by the state of Georgia to become a certified firefighter. State School is unique in that most other fire departments throughout the state that have similar types of programs are usually anywhere from 12 to 16 weeks. This requires a tremendous amount of determination and desire on the participants' part, as it necessitates very long days, followed by nights of reading, studying, and preparation for the next day. I'll also mention that while our recruit training program is completed, and sure, time-tramed in others, in many cases, we have found that the expectations and benchmarks that we set for our recruits and hold them accountable to far exceed what you might find in other organizations. In addition to receiving their initial firefighter training, the RIT program allows the fire department the ability to emphasize what our fire department considers other vital components necessary for a recruit firefighter in having a successful career, such as physical fitness, teamwork, and navigating adversity. The recruit indoctrination program focuses on instilling core values and principles that serve as the foundation of the State Fire Department and the expectations we have for all of our members as it relates to providing fire services and striving to be a point of pride for our community and those that call it home. Since its implementation, one out of every three recruit firefighters fail to successfully complete this program. However, we find that those that are successful are better prepared and have a clearer understanding of physical and mental demands, along with the expectations of being a firefighter for the State Fire Department. Before we bring the graduates forward, I would like to recognize a few folks. First, Assistant Chief Jason Baker and Training Captain Parker Johnson. These two gentlemen are responsible for the RIT training and serve as the lead instructors. As you can imagine, planning and coordinating their recruit school requires a tremendous amount of work and dedication. These two individuals were instrumental in this training process and have laid the foundation for these young men to begin a successful fire service career. I also would like to point out that the daily physical fitness portion of the training was coordinated and supervised by two of the GSU interns we have over at the city gym, Brandon and Macy, who both went well above and beyond in ensuring that every day of class started with these guys finding new muscles to make sore and new ways to crush their spirits. I'd like to ask that we give all these folks a round of applause for their effort. Now, for the graduates of the State Fire Department Recruiting Indoctrination Program Class 2019-1. If I call your name, if you'll just come forward and remain, we'll have the mayor issue the oath of duty. Recruited firefighter Corey Frazwell, Recruited firefighter Graham Campbell, Recruited firefighter Kyle Hall, and Recruited firefighter Nicholas Hunt. Mayor, if you would at this time, you can look at the oath of duty.
I solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter for the City of State School.
As a firefighter for the City of State School.
To the test of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers with respect.
And dignity. To serve the citizens of the City of State School.
To serve the citizens of the City of State School.
And Bullock County with compassion.
And Bullock County with compassion.
Courage.
Urge.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America.
And uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America.
The State of Georgia.
The State of Georgia.
The City of State School.
The City of State School.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item 3C, proclamation for recognition of the National Public Works Week by City and State Public Works Engineering Employee. Jason.
Mayor, I'll refer to Robert Seems to put the word inside.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilman Robert Seems, your superintendent. Every year, National Public Works Week gets bigger and better. This year, the National Public Works Week will be recognized by 19 through 25. Each year, the number of participating municipalities continues to grow, which means the number of citizens who are exposed to the value of the work trade. National Public Works Week has been recognized since 1960 across North America. During this week, we work to educate the public on the importance of public works in their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating at the heart of their local communities to improve everyday quality of life. Trash collection and disposal, design of ride-oil and infrastructure, paving streets, sidewalks, traffic lights, stormwater management, parks and green space maintenance, the city department's vehicles and equipment maintenance, hot holes, utility kits, mowing operations are just a few. At the City of State School, our Public Works Engineering Department has been charged with these tasks. Our street division, parks division, sanitation division, fleet division, solid waste disposal division, engineering division, and stormwater division. This month, we're recognizing some of our employees on our Facebook page with the jobs they do and their years of service in the City of State School. We would like to invite you, please, take a look at our Facebook page. This month, our divisions have been meeting with Bullock County Schools for Career Days, sharing with the students what all we do in the Public Works and Engineering Department. During May 19 through 25, Public Works will be honoring our Public Works employees with an employee appreciation luncheon on that Thursday. We would like to thank you for your continued support at this time.
And we would like to read the proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows. Proclamation by the Mayor and City Council of State School, Georgia. National Public Works Week proclamation May 19 through 25, 2019. It starts here. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of State School. And whereas, the infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities are essential to our citizens. And whereas, it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of State School to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canada Public Works Association Vietnam, we saw. I, Jonathan McCullough, Mayor of the City of State School, hereby designate the week, May 19 through 25, 2019, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize substantial contributions they make protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of State School on the 7th day of May 2019.
I'm sorry, it's not me.
Okay, we'll move down to Agenda Item 3D, which is the proclamation recognizing May 12 through 18, 2019 as National Police Week. Chief Grant.
Mayor, if you would just do the honor of reading the proclamation, I can excuse myself.
All right, thank you, Chief. No pressure at all. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. 2019 National Police Week proclamation. Whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that day evolved as Police Week. And whereas, the officers and staff of the State School Police Department play an essential role in protecting the freedoms and freedoms and safeguarding the rights of the citizens of our community. And whereas, there are nearly 60,000 or so law enforcement officers across the United States each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have died in the line of duty since the first reported death in 1791. And whereas, the names of 144 officers who have died in the line of duty in 2018 are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Disciple. And whereas, it is important to recognize partnership that exists between the police and their community in order to ensure a high quality of life for all citizens. Now therefore, I, Jonathan McCullough, Honorable Mayor of State School, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through May 18, 2019, as Police Week in the City of State School. And therefore, extend appreciation to the members of the State School Police Department for their dedicated work alongside our community and call upon all citizens to take a moment to consider the responsibilities we place upon the shoulders of our law enforcement officers and to reflect on those officers in our nation who have died in the line of duty. And witness whereof, I, Jonathan McCullough, Honorable Mayor of the City of State School, Georgia, here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of State School to be affixed this 7th day of May 2019. Thank you, Chief. All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item 3E, recognition of the Finance Department for receiving the GFAO and a distinguished budget award for the City of State School, FYE 2019.
Cindy West, Finance Director. The city received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for the budget year beginning July 1st, 2018. This is the 15th year that we have received the award. In order to receive the award, we have to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how a one entity's budget starts as a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communication device. The budget document must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within these categories. There were over 1,600 participants in the budget awards program. We are one of 1,082 governments to receive the award nationally and one of 37 in the state of Georgia as of March 31st, 2019. So at this time, I would like to ask Karen Larson, Monica Carver, and Ed Waters, and Heather Sperrer.
All right, we'll move down to Agenda Item 3F, recognition of City Manager Randy Whitmore's retiring with the City of State School on May 31st, 2019. I want to show you guys what the staff has put together for our city manager. It's a very beautiful piece. They have a photo of him and the employees here at the City of State School. And what I want everyone to know about the City of State School is what we're losing in Randy Whitmore is someone who is dedicated to the profession of being a city administrator. And I think this year makes 40 years that he has been in this profession. And the only other hot seat I would say that any municipal organization has outside of the laws of the elected officials is that city manager. Because at the end of the day, that's that person that's going out and saying, hey, look, on a daily basis, what is it that our community needs? And what is it that our employees need in order for them to be successful? So on behalf of the City of State School, the people, I'd like to say, Randy, thank you tremendously for the work that you've done while you've been with us, but we definitely want to wish you...
I told the mayor I'm going to need about a half hour to go over my 40 years, but I'll keep it shorter than that. Usually when I come to a meeting, I actually prepare something, so I'm just not ripping it off the cuff. But this was one of these times when I didn't want to do that. So I cleared it off, so I'm just going to rip it off the cuff and tell you some of the things I feel and have some notes from the budget message, which I'm sure everybody can read, so I thought I would highlight some of those things as we go along. I'm doing fortunate, my wife couldn't make it today, but we'll have 41 years in July. Nine cities and six states. So she's a hell of a woman. She's a hell of a woman to make all those moves in the line. I complain a whole lot about that. Some of you might know that my dad worked in city government for 36 years in a little city back in Kansas. He stayed in the same place. He didn't leave around. He started off reading Weeder and worked his way up to be the city manager for the last 11 years of his career. And I found out then that my dad was really smart. Because when I was the city manager in Kansas, I called him almost on a daily basis for about the first three or four months, just learning from him. And so, probably not a numbers guy, but just working numbers. So 40 years. In fact, I announced that 40 years the same night that Jason mentioned that he was going to turn a truck that was 40 years old. So, you know, I'm kind of... You got 40 years, probably time to turn it. So I spent over 100,000 hours in doing local government stuff. And so, when you get to this day, you start looking at stuff like that. So 100,000 hours. It's been 14,617 days since I started back in 1979. I've worked for over, I think it's 20 mayors or just a few over that, 125 councilors, probably more than that, 100 different department heads, and thousands of city employees. I bought the first computer system for a city back in Kansas when they were just coming out. That was pretty exciting. I hired the first female department head in a city back in Kansas, and that was, oh my gosh, that was kind of a trying experience. The internet came, and we had one computer on the third floor, so we could watch and make sure not to... the internet came, and we had one computer on the third floor, so we could watch and make sure not to get really with, you know, do anything on the internet they shouldn't be. And you look at it today and we carry it around with people all the time. Uh, today's agenda kind of, kind of shows what I've done for my entire career. And seeing firefighters here and the chief having disqualification in the courts, that's what it's all meant. It's all been about that. And I've enjoyed every, I often say every, almost every moment that I, that I've been doing this, it's just like any other job. Uh, the biggest thing, though, is, is, uh, all the people that I've worked with in all the different places. I just have a really, really small role in, uh, how all this works. I mean, I just have a tiny role. It's, it's the people that are out there every day. It's the sanitation guys, it's the parks guys, it's the firefighters, it's the police guys. Those are the people who in finance and everybody else I'm not trying to, and HR and everybody. Those are the people that actually provide that day-to-day service that a lot of people just take for granted. They just take it for granted that everything's gonna be fine. And it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of expertise by everybody that we have working for us to make that happen. I've also been fortunate to work with people who are very conservative with taxpayer dollars. I know you, we hear a story of where it's wasted. This is, this isn't a place, any, any place that I work, public employees understand that we have a public trust and those are taxpayer dollars. We all pay taxes, we want to spend well. And everybody that I've worked with, I think, also carries that. And so, I just want to say that it's been a great career, it's been, uh, fun. When I started back in nineteen seventy-nine, I never thought I would move this many times. I didn't think I would live in Oregon, I didn't think I would live in Georgia, I didn't think I would live in Tennessee. I thought I'd probably just stay in Kansas and just have a pretty regular career. But it's been, it's been fun. I hope I've made a difference, uh, because that's the reason that we do this. So, uh, it's been a grand adventure and, uh, it's been fun. Thanks.
As, as, as the council made their way back to their seats, I do want to give them the opportunity, uh, if they would like to share some words, uh, in regards to Randy and his service to the City of State School.
I'd like to say that Andy, basically, I shared most of it, awesome career, and we eat it in a great place and a great city. So I hope you stick around and have some genuine work days when you retire. Enjoy that, though, also in the baseball games.
I love the baseball, that's catching up.
Randy, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, o- over the years, we've had some challenges in that seat, and, uh, you, you provided some, some stability and some maturity and, uh, really helped us, put us in a position where we are to really help the state move forward. So you were, you were more integral than people realize, and, uh, you certainly need to know that. So, uh, for your last stand or your, your last job, um, you should, you should be proud that this was the last thing you did. Appreciate how you left the city.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know, uh, some of them don't mean much, but I always believe they're pretty good on my, in my book. Absolutely. Um, Council, do, Council, ready?
I'd just like to delve down to what Captain Boy just said, Randy, just been playing the fourth committee in those professionalized grant, so thank you.
And you said six states and nine cities?
See, America.
Alright, um, let's see, do we have any public comments? Alright, we move down to agenda item five, consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, April's approval of minutes for, um, uh, meetings for, uh, what's the, April, I gotta get my days together. April ninth, uh, call council meetings, April ninth, call executive session, April tenth, call council meeting, uh, uh, April, uh, tenth, call executive session minutes, uh, and then April sixteenth, council minutes. Um, and then B is a procedural motion to surplus, uh, disposition of two thousand Chevrolet Civil Auto, uh, in the Public Works Engineering Department and various items at the city gym. Is it a mo-, is the motion to approve? Is there a second? Second. Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Alright, is there a motion, is there, is there a need for us to vote for executive session? Alright, seeing that it does not remove to agenda item seven, consideration of a motion to approve appointment contract upon Charles Pinn and City Manager. Is there a motion to approve?
To move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, alright. Right, let's show that agenda item seven has passed. We'll move down to agenda item eight, um, which is, I want to mature, if you want to combine Kane, eight, nine, and ten?
Of course, right.
Okay, uh, and then read the following, uh, public hearing of, uh, public hearing of first reading and consideration of a motion to move forward with ordinance twenty nineteen oh-two, an ordinance empowering the State School Works Commission, the State School Youth Commission, as well as the State School Commission on Diversity and Inclusion to raise in expense fund, funds in compliance with its, um, with its statement. Um, so is there a motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Kane, if you will, you give us an overview?
Yes, very kind.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Got that, Mr.? Alright, Kane.
Very kind.
So this is, these, uh, these three items are brought forward, um, these would, uh, these are being brought forward in order to have, have, have a motion to move forward to consideration at, uh, at the subsequent, uh, May twenty-first, uh, meeting of mayor and council. Uh, what this will do is, all three of these would give those, those, uh, commissions the ability to, um, to accept or raise and, uh, spend funds in, uh, in, uh, compliance with resolution two thousand twelve nineteen, and also with city grant policy, and also that on the first is will be made pursuant to our, uh, chapter five procurement policy. So this just simply so that we can have these for actual consideration of acts in the, um, May twenty-first meeting.
Kane, uh, is, is this so they can seek grant funds and federal funds?
That's correct.
That's so they can knock on doors?
That's, it's, it is that they would be able to accept funds from, uh, federal, state, or local public, or semi-public agencies, or private individuals, and, or corporations. And, uh, the way that the, the grant situation is set up is crazy, is crazy. Uh, that's somehow that has to be done. And that's been, uh, that's been in effect for seven years now?
Yeah, my, my, my only concern, and I've been asking a couple of businesses and nonprofits, telling me, they just don't want agencies in the city out knocking on doors trying to raise money. Federal funds is one thing that has to be created, so we're going out and, you know.
It says that they may, uh, accept funds, it's not anything about actual, or an act of solicitation. That would be something that y'all would need to decide whether to do or, or not.
Right.
The way this was announced, that they would, that would be approval of mayor and council, that they could operate with and accept funds from those entities.
Do I have any more concerns for you?
You know, I, I understand what you're saying, not competing with those that already exist, but my understanding of them and their capacity is to bring those groups that are already doing such together. So it would be to support them more than compete with them. I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it.
Well, yeah, it's not me. I mean, I've had calls.
No, no, no.
Expressing that concern, like other nonprofit actors, uh, other businesses in town that are involved in fundraising events, and they're concerned that not here's the city going out and competing, because these are city committees, they're the city. They don't want the city not knocking on doors, begging for money. It's one thing to go get grants and seek federal funds.
Right.
Another thing to be knocking on the door is the company and, you know, competing with, you know, the girls' club, Cancer Society, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but we, I think one thing that we have to, you know, keep in mind is that these are commissions that the city is not funding at all. Uh, and so, unlike the State School Buller beautiful commission, which has a budget, it has an employee that's designated to it, these are individuals that's coming out and saying, hey, look, we're gonna have to secure our own funding. And at the end of the day, I mean, this is America, right? If you don't want to give to a particular cause, then you don't give to it. You know, I go to Walmart all of the time, and they say, well, we want to, well, you donate to this, if I don't want to donate to it.
But that's not the city, it's State School standing out there asking for donations. These are City of State School committees, these are non-nonprofit organizations, these are City of State School organizations.
I don't anticipate them standing on the corner, you know, asking for money.
Knocking on doors is the same, even by what.
I don't, I don't see them going on knocking on doors. I can see them having maybe a fundraising event, uh, saying, we, you know, if you support what we do, then you come out and, you know, talk to that event. But them literally going to knock on doors, I, I, you know, if that's a concern, I don't, I, 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 it's kind of a reach.
I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I understand you just...
You're just interested in people expressing their ass.
Yeah, that, I, 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 you know, not understand, I work in the nonprofit world, so I understand the idea of competition, uh, as it relates to that. Uh, but I think that, you know, I think that, you know, these individuals here, I think that them going after grants, uh, things of that nature, maybe some fundraising events, but literally going to go knock on doors, I don't think that's a hap-, that's gonna happen.
Let me be clear, Kane, we have, we have to approve any, any effort of any such, correct?
That's, that's how the law is raised, as it, as it's set, as it is now. And that would of course preclude any sort of ground level advocacy.
Yeah, and Kane, and Kane, I want to be clear, this is the exact same thing that the Chief State School Buller Commission is already allowed to do, correct?
Yes, this is the exact same purpose.
These are already in place. These are pulled from other chapter-two commission languages. I mean, from other, from other organizations in chapter-two relating to these authorities, force, commissions that are, uh, that are established under the authority of the city.
Yes.
There's nothing different between these and the three existing ones.
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to be clear on, is that this is the exact same lan-, language that already exists for city corp, uh, commissions.
The only difference is it does codify, um, the, uh, that, that resolution regarding the grant procurement is actually codified, whereas before it was more the same, you do this, but now it's, it's actually in our code of ordinances for these three.
Well, Dan, I, I just want to be clear, Mayor, when, when these individuals stood up and, you know, talked for an hour and a half, every one of the members stood up from every one of the committees and said, we're not here asking for you to provide us a budget, we're not here asking for a budget, true. We're asking to be able to participate, bring these organizations together. So when you say, well, we haven't set aside a budget, well, when they stood up there, they said, hey, we don't need a budget, this isn't about the budget, we're gonna get some grant funds, some federal funds. What I'm concerned about is, again, that we're, we're creating a city organization that is going to be competing with our local nonprofits, and the local nonprofits and local business owners have expressed a concern about that.
Okay, so let me, let me be clear on this. Uh, they're concerned about competing with other nonprofits.
That's correct.
Okay, um, so do we have a nonprofit that's specific to diversity and, and inclusion that they're gonna be competing with?
I don't know.
Okay, so the answer was no. So do we have a nonprofit outside of Goodwill that's specific to workforce development?
Yes.
Which is?
There's a workforce development right there on South Main.
That's a state entity.
Okay.
Alright, so, so that's a governmental entity doing that. Um, so, and then when we're talking about, uh, youth development in the sense that we're talking about in a collaborative na-, nature of bringing other organizations together to serve youth in this community, is there an organization that's doing that? It's not. So there is no conflict of interest. So with that being said, this is a first reading, if we, you know, if we need to go into further detail, um, but at this point right now, I think it's to, to, to tie the hands of those just looking to improve the community and getting much needed resources to the people of the community, I think that, you know, I, I think that our internal investment, uh, as a, as a, as a, allowing them to go out and secure their own funding to help the people of this community, I think it's a, I think it's a positive one. So with that being said, is there any, any further discussion that this draws?
Yes, there is.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have heard the same concern of this Council, Boy, and Andy. I think it's clear that everyone here in the public arena realizes that without money, it's incredibly difficult to accomplish anything. So the idea that these commissions do their volunteer work that they're doing without some source of funding to try to get the results that they were empowered to achieve is very reckless, is not factual. Everybody needs money. Money moves things. It moves each of us. So far that, Mr. Mayor, that you will put, I think the intention is to allow them to seek the funding that they can without in fact being a representative of the city or out of that. I think that's the concern of Kane, is we're in compliance at this time in this codification to what already exists for other agencies, et cetera.
That's correct.
That's one of the, that's why, that's a thank you, that's all.
And you kind of, you, you, you flash me back to my Goodwill and American Cancer Society days, and in the nonprofit world, it is, they clearly say there's no mission without money. You can have the best of intentions, but when it comes to serving the people, you've got to have the funds to be able to do this.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, is there any further discussion? I see that there isn't any. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against? Yes.
I want to speak for it, and I also want, Marcus Stool?
There you go.
And I'm a non-voting of one, member of one of the commissions. I want to speak for it, but I also want to offer a suggestion. To my understanding, a government entity cannot write a tax receipt. So a suggestion that I would like to offer is that we go forward with this, because this is quick, but that we also set up a five oh one C three organization along the lines of what we already have with Flumile Foundation, we call it One Borough, One Borough Foundation. We can even make the rules so that the board is, the board of the foundation is made up of voting members of the three commissions. And that way, if you get a big donation from a private entity, we have the ability to write a tax receipt. So that's, I, so I support it, but I also want to make that recommendation. That's slower, that'll take more time, because that involves legal stuff, but that's something that I think we ought to be done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone to speak for or against? I see that there aren't any. Is there a motion to close the hearing? Uh, and Council, is there a motion, uh, to...
I think, I think second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. Uh, Council, is there a motion to vote to approve to move forward for the second week?
It's fine, we can do it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So it'll be a motion to move eight, nine, the agenda's eight, nine.
Okay, I will, I will speak. Uh, is there a motion to move agenda item eight, nine, and ten forward, uh, for a second week? Okay, alright, is there any further questions after the motion?
No.
Okay, if there are, second. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright.
Just so I understand the process, in that, that election, we're not voting to move into the second here, that's, that's under the process, is that what you're saying?
Okay. All right. All right. All right, so we'll move down to agenda item eleven, which is the public hearing, the first leader of consideration of motion to move forward with orders 2019-05, the ordinance revising body appointments. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Remove.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All of them, please. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Councilman Boyham has asked the April 16th. He had made a motion to re-adopt the right means of district ordinance regarding body appointments in some of the, you know, two chapters two, subsection thirty-six, or section thirty-six. This section would apply to any authority force or commission established under Chapter Two, and also any body created, whether from an IGA or from any other sort of partnership or any of any other public or private entities. And should the establishment documents of these bodies, that's the general power to appoint members in the city state or or to mayor, city council, this method would be, would be complied with in this order. The chairperson of the body would notify the city clerk of any vacancy or pending vacancy of the seat over which the city has general appointment powers. And next scheduled, with regular scheduled council meeting, clerk would notify mayor council of the vacancy during department head reports. And public applications are required or requested, such announcements shall be made at that time. And mayor council shall send any nominations to fill the vacancy or vacancies to city clerk via email prior to the next meeting of mayor council. Clerk shall produce a list of nominees and/or applications to be presented to mayor council consideration during the secondary session at that regular scheduled meeting. And those vacancies, vacancies or vacancies will be discussed in the secondary session. And then, of course, any action taken would be done in a concession of council meeting. And this would not apply to the establishment documents, best appointment powers in a particular elected or non-elected person or position, such as if it's a, the, the council commissioner for appoints this one, this whole process would get through. Same way, when we first did these apps, we had a board, there was a, there was a mayor and city specific appointments, this would be for these, for these appointments that are city states or or mayor council in general.
Thank you, Kane. Is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Let me just be clear, so the applications can come from an individual seeking the opportunity or from someone else, such as one of us.
If this one is that the applications are where it sets out that applications can be made for the appointments, then yes. If not, if it's just a simple appointment, then mayor, of course, there can be those sorts of solicitations and applications to individual, either the mayor or a council member, but that the actual nominations would come from one of the six of them. Unless it was one of these where we do solicit applications, which occasionally we'll do. I believe we had some of those on the mayoral commissions, that applications were taken, would be taken for voting and non-voting, but the point is, is we just, it would just streamline the process for the appointment of individuals to these ones, the city itself has the general appointment process in place of an individual person or elected position. This way, the discussion of these nominations can be done in the secondary session, such as we're doing. Essentially private citizens here.
Yeah. Is there any, any further questions for Kane? All right, thank you, Kane, so much. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Remove.
All right, all of them, please.
Aye.
All right, Council, is there a motion to vote to approve the move forward for second week?
Remove.
Second.
All of them, please.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I will move down to agenda item twelve, which is public hearing, discussion of the whole city of State's World Boulevard fiscal year twenty twenty. City, if you will, come forward. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Remove.
Second. All of them, please.
Aye.
City, if you will.
This is the public hearing for the twenty, by twenty twenty budget. The, there has been a hard copy available in the finance department, it's the same as what we presented at the budget retreat. Since Friday, we have had it up on the website with most of the supplementary information that we put in there. We are still trying to wrap up a few items of that. We are looking at a sixty-two point three million dollar budget this fiscal year twenty twenty. That is five point six million more than we had in twenty nineteen, with majority of that being the T-splused. The T-splused, we're looking at four point three million dollars in expenditures, a combined five point seven for the two only thirteen and twenty nineteen splused, and that puts it over ten point one million in total splused expenditures this year twenty twenty. The general fund is, has expenditures of sixteen point three million, combined enterprise funds are twenty-five point two million. And this creek on the blue mile, we have five hundred thousand pushing for next year, one point seven for twenty twenty-one, two point seven million for twenty twenty-two. And we are scheduled for adoption on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. I believe Mr. Randy has some comments as well.
I want to hit some, some high points from those budget assumptions we talked about back in April. We always talk about that carryover that we have, and we're up to, or around thirty-three percent, or around five million. I can't say nothing, it's really important to keep that kind of reserve, so that we're looking to issue bonds and, and when the economy does have a downturn, have the money to, to be able to see our way through that. There will be an increase in sanitation rates, approximately five percent for this coming year, and also the tippage fee, another five percent. Those fees have not been increased for, for about three years, and one for six or seven years, I believe. The tippage fee, I think, has been out long in the budget. As we proposed, also has the hundred pay plan study for employees that will be phased in, the increases starting July of twenty nineteen, and hundred increases January first of twenty twenty, and then the final increase in July of twenty twenty, with some alcohol in there because of the, the pay, I mean, taking care of. We also were able to add some positions this year. We have two positions in the police department and the patrol division, one accountant, position in finance, one position in roll-off division of sanitation, and one position in customer service of utility going. So I can say, as I do leave, that everything is pretty solid financially, and it's kind of a way you always want to leave a place you don't want to leave, I journey now, is everybody have the money. So over the years, everybody's done a, done a great job in getting this to this point, and I'm sure everybody will, will look forward to doing the same thing and being conservative in, in how we do our spending. So with that, we'll plan on adoption in the next week.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to double down on Randy's comments. I look for citizens, we've got a newspaper here, you know, you need to realize what a substantially big operation financing in the city of State's World has become. We're poised for dynamic growth and opportunity for all our citizens who are working on all things, so that all citizens benefit from the rising economic times in Bullitt County and particularly State's World, Georgia. The grand openings for new businesses are at a pleasant high right now, and I do believe, Randy, that you're leaving the city in good hands financially. I know we've got some increases here, a few things, but understandably, they're warranted over the time since the last increases. And I want to thank Cindy and others for their hard work in getting this moving. There's a lot of hard work, private session, many hours, and we're just arriving where we are right now. I just wanted to kind of get a little bit of specific to that, so the citizens realize they come to me about this, this is an opening. There are a lot of hard hours to make this happen. Thank you.
Council, we could not have said that any better. Randy, Cindy, the entire staff here, they've done a phenomenal job getting us to this point. This didn't just happen in recent years, this has been years in the making for us to get to this point. So it's, it's, and we're seeing it pay off today. So Cindy, you guys, Randy, everyone, we thank y'all for everything that you guys have been doing. Council, you said it right. Absolutely, we are a great point in this city, and we definitely want to take that back. Thank you. So with that being said, is there any further comments from Council? Seeing that it is not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Remove.
All right. Now, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion for, oh, I'm sorry. Say it again?
Second.
Oh, my bad.
We had the second.
All right, all of them, please, close the hearing. All right, now, Council, is there a motion to approve the public, agenda item twelve? We don't have to, oh, I'm gone with it.
We did, we did.
Okay. All right, thank you. Agenda item thirteen, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2019-13, a resolution approving application for funding in the amount of six thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars fifty cent for the local government scrap tire abatement program administered by the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Council meeting a few weeks back, it was, was a public discussion regarding tires in the right of way and what we could be doing to collect those tires. Robber Seamus has sent several programs that are available for the state of Georgia, and I was very down on Mr. Randy.
Mayor, Council, Robert Seamus, Streets Department Superintendent. Back when we had the concerns brought from the council about the scrap tires, we have indeed in the past, hold on, picked up, scrap tires here and there. So as those, those concerns were all forward, we moved forward and charged our sanitation division and our streets division to aggressively find these tires on our right of ways, get this light off of the right of ways, ensure it's secured and properly disposed of. As of those comments, we have collected nine point one nine tons of tires, to go up at eight hundred and eighteen tires. With that being said, I happened to be privileged to go to a Key Georgia Beautiful Conference a few years ago, and remembered some of our talking going on at the conference were about different people's strategies dealing with tires. There are some programs out there, I asked Ms. Megan, over in the Key State's World Beautiful, to look up some of this stuff for me. She did, and got me in touch with the EPD, Mr. Mary Toth, who have been engaged with several little ladies at the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, and in doing so, we have come across a grant, local government scrap tire abatement reimbursement application for right of way cleanups. It's got a name. All right, with that being said, this will be a program that will be a twelve month program. During this time, we follow their set guidelines, do what they say we need to do. Any of the tires that we pick up on our right of way, we can collect them, dispose of them properly, and the funds for the disposal will be reimbursed to the city of State's World. Right now, we're projecting approximately six, a little over six thousand dollars, six thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars fifty cent, to be exact, as the projected cost. This time next year, I hope to report to you that not only did we do this amount, that we go back and ask for more if needed. We have all the proper documentation, everything EPD, excuse me, the Georgia EPD has asked for, but to move forward to be able to apply for this grant, we do have to follow our grant policy, which brings up to, y'all to that.
Thank you.
Any questions, Matt?
I have a quick question, so, not in Texas, obviously, initial parts, a hard process to follow, Robert, when you go into, you know, how do you do this?
It is really not. The biggest thing is that these tires cannot be integrated in any of the tires that are picked up through other citizens taking stuff to the landfill, other commercial people taking stuff to the landfill. These have to be completely kept separate. Myself and the superintendent out at the landfill have worked this out, we'll have a segregated area, these tires can be stored in. Once we have enough for a semi-tractor trailer load, those will be loaded completely separate, tagged completely separate, and shipped separately. Those receipts, once we, once we're invoicing everything, all the paperwork will be turned in on a quarterly basis, and at the end of the year, we will, we will be cut a check from EPD for the amount that we submit.
I'd like to comment on Jason, Rob, and also Megan, for your initiative being that done. Definitely a problem throughout the city, especially District Two, so I follow your counsel.
Yes, sir. I actually went by District Two yesterday just to do a ride through to check on the situation over there. Our mowing crews have recently gone through there, and it is looking a whole lot better.
Is there, is there, there's no further discussion, but Council, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second. All right, all of them, please.
Aye.
All right, let us know that agenda item thirteen has passed, we'll move down to agenda item fourteen. Consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2019-14, a resolution authorizing debt for socials to act as city's agent, city out analyzing and financing options for public infrastructure, in the code of legislation.
Mayor, Council, this is a resolution that would allow our financial analysts to have a board and company to, to explore and evaluate financing options to fund the four, three, four billion dollars needed for public infrastructure installation and construction of the old registered tax allocation district. But this would be so that they could actually negotiate on our behalf, not so they could sign on our behalf. There would be sort of a specific, specific agency ability, they could generate any sort of debt obligation. This would be so they could, for financing options, so that we may bring them for mayor council, to look at or approve. I think this would be, this would be not just to look at, add revenue bonds, it would also be for other financing options that are available.
Any comments, Council?
Yeah, Kane, if you would, and you're right with the rest of the guys, they're going to issue bonds, typically bonds are bought by some kind of an institutional investor and, I don't know, Swinton, buys either half or the whole portion, you know? And so essentially, some institution outside of the city, State's World outside of Bullitt County is making money off our tax.
Right.
So I was wondering if there's some way that they could, if they could set aside a portion of those bonds, a ten percent or something along those lines, to make them available for a period of time to local folks, so local people could invest in our grant. I know that's not a typical thing, and it's a little challenging to do, but if, and if we can't do it, we can't, but I would like them to at least look into the possibility of giving our local citizens the option to buy some of these bonds and invest in our own city.
I don't know where that would be in the, just in the schedule here.
Just tell him that and they'll figure it out.
All right. Well, let them know that we would, that we would ask that there be a purchasing option for local citizens.
Yeah, so you set aside a percentage that would allow, yeah, because normally when you buy these kind of bonds, you have to buy them a big chunk, you know, you don't buy ten, you buy ten thousand. And so it's unusual to have any ten or fifteen bonds available, you know, a thousand dollars worth or fifteen hundred bucks worth. But it is possible to do. So I've been looking for it. I mean, it'd be, it'd be great for our citizens to be able to invest in our own, and be able to, you know, invest money, you know, have a bond, and be able to, you know, for that money to stay here locally. Otherwise, all that money goes to some institutional investor in New York or Chicago or DC somewhere.
Sure. And we could certainly, we certainly talked to Mr. Gaffar, who should be our point, the point man, I'll bring that.
And if he has any questions.
I think, I agree with that, that's a good idea, that people, local people often to invest.
Is there a motion to approve agenda item fourteen?
Remove.
Second.
Second.
All of them, please.
Aye.
All right, we move down to agenda item fifteen, which is other business. All right, we move down to agenda item fifteen, which is other business from city council. Councilor, is there any other business that needed to be discussed for the build of the city? Thank you, the senior manager. There we go. Thank you. Senator, go forward. We'll move down to agenda item sixteen, which is city manager's comments. We have Robert and Megan, who are going to give us an update on the great American cleanup.
Megan Jackson, Keep Statesboro Boulevard Beautiful Coordinator. So, this year on April thirteenth, we just bring in the Statesboro event. Keep Statesboro Boulevard Beautiful and the City of Statesboro hosted the Great American Cleanup Event, which is a citywide litter cleanup. And we had over a hundred and fifty-five volunteers just for this event from, uh, volunteers from North Southern, individuals and families, as well as some new collaborations with groups such as Rotary Club, OBG technical college, Fish and Wildlife Club, and also with the OBG River Keepers, which is the, it's out there actually out of Savannah, and they do the Rivers Alive Program. And they actually did some separate areas and got into some of the waterways and canals with their special equipment and did a cleanup there, which is something that we've never done before. So, that was very exciting. And we had over forty public areas that were cleaned from litter as a result of this event. And, um, we also had a lot of local businesses this year that had small groups of volunteers, which was really exciting as well. And so, along with all these volunteers and the prep for this event from some of our volunteers, we had over four hundred and eighty, um, volunteer hours, so, just for this event. And also for this event, we presented material on litter laws and penalties, as well as gave away promotional materials for Keep Statesboro Boulevard Beautiful and other litter abatement products like pocket ashtrays, um, to help people pick up their cigarette butts and not, um, litter them on the ground. So, we just gave people opportunities to take some of these items. We talked to them about litter and, uh, as they came by, so we actually had one educational booth and one, um, cleanup booth for volunteers to sign up. So, we have two separate things going on this year. And I think that the education booth is something that we want to go forward with in the future because it was really helpful to get to meet and talk to more people, um, and tell them about what we do, so.
Megan?
Yes.
Was that your group on Saturday picking up on bypass? Because it was a large group that appeared to be, uh, to the suburbs.
It was a group, like, what, thirty?
Uh, this past weekend.
Oh, that wasn't us, no.
Somebody, David Sticks, David, mind?
That wasn't from Kansas.
It was a large group out there, a little bypass.
They wearing one?
No, because, uh, some organization was out.
That's indicative of our community.
Yeah. Robert Seamus, Streets and Parks Superintendent. Uh, just also wanted to, uh, mention, uh, even following up with Ms. Megan, on the Great American Cleanup. One of the things we did this year, uh, Ms. Megan had a, uh, litter campaign going with the law enforcement and code enforcement from the city and Bullock County. And in doing so, we did receive some training, uh, from various ordinance and all state laws that could be enforced. Irish, uh, sanitation superintendent has been doing a really good job this year in being very diligent on watching for illegal dumping around town. Uh, we have had some issues there. The other day, we did, uh, actually fines illegal dumping of one of these sites. He, uh, intern brought law force beside him with us on this. They were able to identify who had the illegal dumping. Went to the house, did a knocking talk on the front door, and it issued citations for this illegal dumping. So, there's plenty of, of data on that. And, and we are aggressively trying to educate the public on the illegal dumping around Statesboro.
Robert, any, any plans to do like a, a, a chemicals or electronics type pickup sometime soon? Or even a tire pickup, you know, instead of having to run around and pick them up? It'd be nice if somebody just, would have been a part of it.
Well, I actually appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, it, with the tires, uh, if, if you live in Bullock County and pay taxes in Bullock County, you can use the recycling centers. We have tire amnesty date every day. All you gotta do is put it in the trunk of your car in the truck, drive by a recycling center. They will allow you to put a, put a tire to, into your recycling bin there for tires at no charge. You just gotta make the effort.
We'll work on educating the public about their large opportunities.
Quit leaving them by my dumpster, right?
Yeah, and, um, Ms. Megan is, uh, is looking into a plastics recycling right now. We have a, a local group here in town that's, uh, talking about recycling, some plastic, bringing some people in to, uh, to help with that, and she'll be getting back with us on, on that project.
Please, ladies. Thank you. Thank you. Megan? Nothing else? All right, uh, we move down to agenda item seventeen, which is, uh, public comments, reading public comments. Saying that there are none. We'll move down to agenda item eighteen, which is consideration, uh, to a journal. Is there a motion to a journal?
For movement.
Okay, there we go. All of them, please? I need more than one. There we go, yeah. All right, have a break, ladies, please.